Counsel will come to order. All rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. I'm going to go to Counsel Winslow for another moment of silence.
Yeah, I just, Tom Kafka of Columbia Street, a longtime Ward Six resident. He loved folk dancing and he was a longtime member of the Ward Six Democratic Committee. Passed away last week, so just wanted to send condolences to his wife, Suzanne Castanza. And so just have a moment of silence for that. Thank you.
And we're going to go to Counsel Sika for another moment of silence.
Thank you, Counsel President. Woodhead also lost somebody this past week. Patricia Daly is the mother of Dan Mahoyt.
Mahat.
Mahat. He owns New England Security on the corner of Broadway and East and Ave. He's a Malden business owner. Him and his mother live on Coleman Street. She passed away unexpectedly at the age of 64, so I'd like to have a moment of silence for Patricia.
Thank you. And I would actually like to also do a moment of silence. I apologize. So this individual is not a resident of Malden. They're actually a resident of Everett. But my great aunt, my mom's Aunt Josie Masana unfortunately passed away yesterday. And you know Everett and Malden, as well as Melrose, all used to be Malden. And so I would like to do a moment of silence for a great woman who was really influential in my life and my mom's life. Thank you. Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counsel President O'Malley.
Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that Urban Media Arts, UMA, will be recording this evening's meetings. So just to be aware, there will be audio and video recordings of this evening's meeting. So under our rules, we allow public comment. Public comment is allowed for any of the subject matter relevant to today's meeting agenda. And everyone must keep their comments to two minutes or less. It looks like we have no one signed up in person to speak. Have we had any public comment in writing?
No.
And we don't have anything in writing. So now we're going to move on to our consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meetings to be approved, one reappointment to be confirmed, and there are seven petitions to be referred to license. Under our rules, any counselor can remove any of the matters from the consent agenda. Would anyone like to do that? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? On Counsel Sika, second to Counsel Simonelli. We're all in person. Oh, I think because we are doing a reappointment, we do need to do a roll call vote on that. So the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, the consent agenda is approved 10 to 0. The next order of business is motions, orders, and resolutions.
Paper 248-25, order that the council president work with the chief financial officer and finance team to evaluate options for increased access and oversight of the city's finances, including but not limited to the following possible proposals. Number one, read-only access to the city's financial software. Number two, the production of regular financial reporting to be shared with the finance committee and other interested officials.
Oh, so I think because this is my paper, I need to vacate the chair and hand it over to our President Protem Linehan.
Let me orient myself to the driver's seat here. Okay, so I will recognize Counsel O'Malley for the paper.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate that. And I apologize for not coordinating this before. I just realized it when it came up on the agenda. So this is something I had been thinking about for a rather long time. Particularly when we have difficult financial times coming up. You know, being fully informed as the finance committee or the council or any of the other elected officials or appointed officials in the city that would need access. You know, I think there are ways that we can either do read-only access potentially. That might not be as ideal if we don't know what we're looking at. So the other dynamic is having regular reporting coming out. I did talk to both the CFO and our controller, Chuck Ranigan, as well as our city treasurer, Dan Grover. And they are aware and are going to look at it. It might not end up being either of these ideas, but it's how can we as a city council stay informed and up to date, particularly as we're going into tough budget seasons. And with that, I will take any questions. And if the city treasurer would like to speak, he's welcome to, but he's not pressured to do it. So either way, but he is available here for questions.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel President O'Malley. You okay? Okay, I have, wait a minute, hang on, Counselor McDonald. I'll recognize you first.
Thank you, Counsel, I guess Counsel President. I don't know, are you acting Counsel President? Counsel President Protem? Just Amanda, thank you.
Thank you.
And yeah, well, I just want to say, well, I haven't had a chance to talk to the council president about this. I, you know, I really support the goals here. I agree that read-only access to the city's financial software is likely to run into the challenge of needing to know what things mean. My experience looking at accounting software is that it doesn't always tell you the things you need unless you get the reports to run that will tell you the things that you need. So I wanted to know if you would be open to also adding the finance chair to this order, that the city council president work with the chief financial officer and the finance chair. And I would be happy to be added as a co-sponsor if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a great friendly amendment.
Okay. Are you all set, Counsel McDonald?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will take Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I know giving some type of access to the public more broadly always creates some cybersecurity issues. So I wonder if we should also have asked the information technology officer to be involved in some way. And I don't know if the treasurer would be aware or that'd be something we should involve. The IT, Anthony Rodriguez, just to be certain on that front.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I think based on the conversations that I've had so far, the read-only access is probably not what would be ideal. It's just one of the ideas that I had. It's probably more so going to be regular reporting. Yeah, including the IT director is a great idea. I don't know if we need to amend it. I think it's just something that's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I just make a reminder. I don't know if you know necessarily have to amend it, but yeah, in support of trying to be more transparent.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Yes, thank you so much. I am in full support of this, but understanding now you might have to do some more work on it. Love the idea of being more transparent. I did have a question though here with, says the production of regular financial reporting to be shared with the finance committee and other interested officials. So I'm not sure if what Counsel Winslow just said about the public, could I ask, like, was this to mean that inside City Hall we'll have access to that or the general public?
Yeah, I wasn't envisioning the general public having access. Obviously, if there are reports being printed or produced, those are public records. This was more for internal individuals.
Okay, and then also for the friendly amendment, it says here that it would be shared with the finance committee. So would it be, could we add the finance committee or just the chair? Or leave it as is here where it says with the finance committee and other interested officials? And I would like to be a sponsor as well. Thank you.
I apologize. I didn't quite understand. So yeah, the vision was that we have a finance committee and that the finance committee should be the primary funnel for this information. And that if there are other, like for instance, say you're not on finance anymore, but you're still interested in finance. You could still be. Or let's say the mayor would like to have the same type of access. I think that that would make sense too. That's why I put other interested officials.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, you're all set, Counsel Cologne Hayes? Yes, thank you. Okay, seeing no other lights, everybody all set? So we have a friendly amendment from, is that you, Counselor McDonald, to add after the words chief financial officer and finance chair? Do I have a second on that? Counselor Winslow, we can do a voice vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of amending the paper?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that carries. And then we need a motion to adopt the order?
As amended.
As amended. Let's go by Counsel O'Malley, seconded by Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Oh, no, no, I heard that, please, sir. I don't know if I can make motions technically.
Oh, that's a good point. Okay, so on a motion by Counsel Cologne Hayes, seconded by Counsel Simonelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. Do you want me to stay here for your other paper? Okay, will the clerk please read the next order of business?
Paper 249-25, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Malden that the code of the city of Malden, MCC, is hereby amended by adding Title II, Chapter 04, Section 040, remote participation. All boards, commissions, and multi-member public bodies shall provide for remote participation by the public at meetings and hearings. Individual boards, commissions, or multi-member public bodies may develop their own rules for remote participation by their own members.
Okay, Counsel President O'Malley for the paper.
So actually, this year I felt like I wasn't very productive. I hadn't submitted many papers, and now I'm realizing why. Because it's kind of a weird thing if you're a council president to like, you know, put papers in. But this is something that I had also been thinking about for a while. And you know, now that with the support of the administration and Ron Hogan and the council being such good sports, and we've taken a lot of opportunity to use remote participation, both our members as well as the public. You know, I think that we've shown that it is possible. There are some kinks that I think we're ironing out as the city council. And I think that since we've led by example, I think it would make sense to try to bring the common sense lessons that we've learned to other boards and commissions. And one of the reasons being is, you know, in the heyday, I guess it was, back in 2019 before COVID, you know, we used to have a lot of people attend our meetings, our public meetings, boards and commissions. We had, you know, citizen journalists live streaming on Facebook, you know, writing all different types of things to keep people informed. And then COVID happened, and it pushed us all onto Zoom into remote meetings. And we had even more participation, which was, you know, a surprise. But then, you know, since coming back in person, very few people show up. I thank the people in the audience tonight for coming here and holding us accountable. But it's something that, you know, people have maybe lost the reflexive, like a muscle memory of coming to public meetings and kind of keeping an eye on the watchman. Is that how you say it? And so I would like to give people the access to, say, if they have children or they work the late shift and they want to be able to kind of follow along. I think it'd be great to give people access, even selfishly for myself. We do have some boards and commissions that meet during business hours, and it's very hard to really ever participate in those meetings. And so if it was an option for people to, you know, tune in potentially during their lunch break or take a late lunch to tune into some of those meetings that happen in the middle of the day. I can't remember the last time I've been to a sign design review committee meeting. I know it exists and you do a great job. So that's just my thought. And the other dynamic is if, say, you have a board that does not want their members to be remote, then the last sentence basically says, individual boards, commissions, and multi-member bodies may develop their own rules for remote participation by their own members. So for instance, if the planning board doesn't want to allow the planning board members to attend remotely, they could pass a rule that says they are not allowed to attend remotely, and they must come in person. Each board is up to itself and has its own discretion. So I don't want to belabor the point. Thank you for entertaining this paper.
Okay, thank you, Counsel O'Malley. I'll take Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I actually had a question. I think I might have answered myself. So it says shall. So can we, are we requiring them to have remote participation for the public? Or is it they can? Jim's saying like, so it seems like even in your description it was they will be, but can we tell them they have to? Because we're asking a lot of the volunteer, you know, boards and commissions. So it might be that, as your example, the planning board might say that their members cannot. But are we saying that now the traffic commission has to or the planning board has to have remote participation? Or they can have remote participation?
It's a great question. So right now they can, and there's nothing preventing them from having remote participation. This would require that they shall and they must have remote participation for the public. Their own members, they decide. If so, if, so I'll give you an example. The Conservation Commission is also entirely, you know, volunteer.
Right.
They do them remotely. And, you know, so there are some boards that do, some boards that don't. Some boards have city staff that might be able to support. Others do not. But it's interesting that the ones that don't really have city, full-time city staff members are actually the ones that are more remote, or more remote participation, like CPC also.
So is this getting referred to someone?
Yeah, I think they refer this to ordinance.
Only because we really need to actually have their input on if there is some, we sometimes pass these things and we really don't have their input in how it actually works in reality.
Yeah, I think referring it to ordinance, ironing these details out is ideal. And the one benefit is that because COVID forced us to do this already, it's kind of like, the hardest part is going from Zoom to Teams, which is the kind of experience that we had. So one of the other reasons I'd like to do this sooner rather than later is that we've learned all these lessons. Our support staff and our city clerk and the clerk of committees and our IT staff are really good at training people now. So now would be the time to try to get that training out there to develop the skill set. But I think ordinance is the right place for it to go.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crowe. I have next Counselor Cologne Hayes. Thank you very much. I think this is a great idea and also want to thank you for doing all you've done as you were president this year to get us providing remote access to meetings and committee meetings. So I think it's been great. And I hear what Counsel Crowe means, and since you're going to refer it to ordinance, you can talk it out there and hash it out. But from what I've seen on the personnel committees, who we are interviewing, I can't imagine anyone having an issue with getting this up and going. Like, there's so many people now, this is like the way of life in business, and it may actually be harder for some of our staff. So training would be great, but the school committee's been so great at it. I think sometimes it just takes doing it, jumping in, learning, and getting it done because it's what our public deserves to be able to access these meetings. And I think it's a great idea. Looking forward to seeing it hash out in ordinance. Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just go back on what my colleague, Counsel Crowe, was mentioning. I mean, I don't know, maybe just to kind of clean up the language I'm sending it in by saying may instead of shall. Just shall sounds so much like you shall do this. And I mean, I don't know if we want, right, yeah, I don't know if we want to do that. But maybe may and then kind of leave it up to the, like you were saying, the individual department, uh, boards to decide whether or not shall means they must or not. But coming from us, maybe it should be going in as shall, may instead of shall. Just my, it just sounds, it just sounds softer. And again, like Counsel Cologne Hayes said, we can hammer this out in committee. But I would feel better of it going in with a little change on saying, instead of saying shall, say may.
May I respond?
Of course.
So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the desire to compromise there. Right now it is a may, so they may do it. And I think that one of the reasons why I think it's okay for the city council to say shall and order boards and commissions.
I thought it was can. I thought the word was can.
No, can is their members.
Okay.
So like, for instance, like, that allows like remote participation by the public, but we've also decided that our members can. What I'm saying is the public must be allowed to attend remotely, and the members may, based on a vote of that body. And the only reason why I think it's acceptable for us to order boards and commissions to do things is oftentimes under state law, we created them. And if we abolish them, not saying we would, but if we abolish the planning board, we become the planning board. The planning board's power flows from us, the city council. If we found out we were also, us and the mayor are also the Board of Health. We're changing that in the charter, but so much of the power of the city flows from us. So I think it's okay for us to set the parameters. But I think hashing it out in ordinance is the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would definitely recommend that we refer it. You know, one kind of pause I have is, I mean, I think I like the spirit of it, but you know, as someone, you know, being on the east side of town, I like having meetings there for convenience of people to get there rather than having it at City Hall. And the capabilities in like the school buildings and other buildings are less. And I know when we've tried to have, you know, we've had a lot of community meetings at Salemwood School and their cafeteria. It's, it can be difficult. They don't have very good Wi-Fi and the acoustics are bad. So it gets hard for, you know, so it's just something we have to think of. We have the great technology, this room is perfect for it. But if you want to do something outside of City Hall, that is a problem. And then it can be sometimes unfair to people who want to participate in person. So that's just something we have to figure out or whatever. There are technical limitations that are outside this building. You know, I've had, you know, the great community room at the police station does not have the capabilities we have here, even though it's a pretty modern building. So there may be the type of thing that, you know, as I try to have community meetings, there's technical limitations to try to fulfill this. So it's just something to think about, so yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor McDonald.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President Protem. And I also think this is really interesting and have some experience with groups that are volunteer-led and trying to navigate the technology around this. And I just want to say, I think this is why we have committee processes to investigate all these questions and then limitations and talk with other folks. And so I would encourage just to take up the referral to the Rules and Ordinance Committee and then make sure that we are reaching out to our commission and board chairs in that process to talk to them about this and proceed from there.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to refer to the Rules and Ordinance Committee.
Fantastic. So I'll take that as a motion by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes to refer to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is referred. Do you need me to stay for the following? Okay. Well, now I'm drunk with power and I don't want to give up my seat.
Thank you so much for that. I really appreciate it. Yeah, so the next order of business, please.
In accordance with 940 CMR 29, open meetings, this agenda was revised on May 19th to reflect an unexpected occurrence with the Massachusetts Land Court demanding immediate action in the two papers as posted below, known as Paper 255 and 256, series of 2025. Paper 255-25, order, the council will vote on whether to sell or retain the property known as 42 Crescent Avenue and by city assessor's parcel identification number 072-824-410, as in accordance with the tax title litigation and foreclosure action with the Massachusetts Land Court case number 24 TL 000383.
Thank you. So yeah, just to provide, we sent this information by email. I don't know if y'all saw it. But I am listed as a sponsor, but I'm not sponsoring this. I'm bringing it to your attention because we had basically tax title litigation. And at some point in the last two or so weeks, we got a final judgment that basically said that we now own these properties. So like, they are now city property. And, which I don't remember this ever happening in my tenure. We do have Dan Grover, the city treasurer, here to answer any questions. On one of them, and I can't, I think it says it in the email, and I don't have the best reception, I can bring it up. But one of the properties, we had 14 days to decide, are you going to retain the property or sell the property? If we retain the property, we would need to have it appraised, and we would need to pay the property owner the difference between what they owe us and our attorney's fees and what the value of the property is. That would require an appropriation. We don't really have the money to buy houses right now. So really, the only option that gives us is to sell these properties. The other one, we have to make, we have those 14 days, is coming up tomorrow. So this is an emergency about what we want to do. I, I didn't want to make this call myself as the council president because we do have some city ordinances that have defined a process related to referring it to public properties, getting an opinion from the planning board and getting an appraisal. Unfortunately, all of those steps cannot be done in 14 days now. And we are in the position of either we buy these properties by paying them what they owe or we sell them. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you for the point of information. Listen, I don't have a problem with, you know, taking property that's dilapidated, tax titled, and we could put it to some good use. We've done that already in the past. I'd just like to caution my colleagues that I had been down this road before. And I don't mean to be redundant because I know I've told some of yous this in the early 2000s. After 9/11, we were in a big budget crisis, and I had got a map of my neighborhood. And we got all these parcels of land that the city owned, including a couple of big-sized parcels. And we did multi-different uses with them, whether it was affordable housing, affordable homeownership down there. Just, this is my word of caution. We found out as we were going through this that we had to get a home rule petition because now that it's identified as being public property for the city of Malden, when you sell public, unless it's changed, unless our legal guy, a legal team can come up here and tell us that that has been changed. In the past, to sell public, to sell public properties from the city, the money that you receive from that sale has to go back into public properties coffers. You have to do a home rule petition to change it for it to go into the general fund. We've done that before. That's what we did after 9/11 to close that budget gap, the deficit of like $3 million. But again, I don't know if the rules have changed since then or if this is something different where it's tax titled. I don't know, but I think it's something that we really need to know about before we, I mean, or whether, I mean, unless you need the money in public properties, but.
And I'm going to go to the city treasurer. I just want to clarify that we only, do we only read the first paper or do we also read the second paper?
We only read the first one.
We only, okay. Should we, do we want to take both of the papers up at the same time? So we're going to read the second, because I want to have this conversation with the people who own this property or maybe their neighbors and their friends, knowing that we're talking about their property. So please read 256-25.
Paper 256-25, order, the council will vote on whether to sell or retain the property known as 42 Wentworth Street and by city assessors. sell or retain the property known as forty, forty-two Wentworth Street, and by city assessors, parcel identification number zero two nine one four five five one eight, as in accordance with the tax title, with tax title litigation and foreclosure action with the Massachusetts Land Court case number twenty-two T L zero 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 three four three.
Yes, and then one other thing, I, I, I'm going to also read, I, 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 these are all public records, and I think it's important that people know, um, my understanding is that, um, the, the, the city, uh, the city staff, as well as our, our outside legal consultant, Dan Brozio, um, L L P, have been in various levels of con- contact with the individuals. Uh, one of the properties is in Ward four, the other one is in Ward, in Ward two. Um, I am going to just read the names and the addresses, because if people do know these people, please reach out and let them know that they can still, you know, get their property back, but they must reach out to us very soon. Um, so forty-two Crescent Ave, Malden, MA, oh two one four eight, uh, Wong Wong Z Se, Qua, uh, Kwakong Tsie, uh, tw- forty-two Crescent Ave, um, you know, if, please, if you know these people, um, have them reach out to the city. The, the other property, um, is owned by, um, it's in, again, Ward two, forty to forty-two Wentworth Street, uh, and that property, sorry, I have a very bad cell service, is owned by, uh, Kim Chi Ing, Wan Sen Ma, Wan Hong Ma, Yan Si King Ing, forty Wentworth Street, Malden, Massachusetts. Uh, and with that, um, I'm going to go to the city treasurer to give us an update, um, and, and kind of clarify the question that Counselor Simonelli had, um, and kind of maybe explain how we got here, and then I have Cologne Hayes and Condon, but I'm going to go to Condon first, because it's in Ward two, too.
Okay.
Oh, actually, Counselor Cologne Hayes wants to recuse herself from this conversation.
Yeah, so, thank you, um, when I read this paper tonight, I, I realized I'm on the, um, Metro North Housing Corp., and what we do is purchase properties, um, and convert them into affordable housing, and my concern is the appearance of any kind of conflict if they do bid on this property, I don't want to jeopardize any kind of sale if that were to happen, um, so that's why I'm asking to recuse myself.
Okay, on Counselor Cologne Hayes' motion to recuse herself, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Counselor Cologne Hayes has recused, please leave the meeting, it is seven thirty-seven P M. Uh, city treasurer, Grover.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a whole bunch of papers here, but I didn't write a speech, so hopefully I can address your questions as I come up and, you know, just give you an update. So, yes, you have in front of you two papers, um, to make a decision on to retain or sell two properties that the Sadiq now currently owns, um, but how did we get here? So, last year, the legislature, as you may know, because we had, had some conversations related to unclaimed property recently, uh, I think it was in September, uh, the legislature changed the tax title laws in order to, um, better protect the constituents and the homeowners. Uh, I, the idea was to move the ability for cities and towns to basically steal people's property, it's called equity theft. So there were a whole slew of changes in the law, so one of those changes was that if you are to take a property through tax title, um, you have to make a decision whether to retain, as in the city keeps it, or sell the property, you have to make that decision within fourteen days of a judgment from land court. Uh, that is completely, that is a huge difference than what was done previously. If you do choose to retain, as Counselor President had previously indicated, uh, retention is, you'd have to get three appraisals for the property, and then you have to provide the homeowners the opportunity to claim the excess equity above and beyond any real estate taxes, fees, and interest or penalties that have already been applied to the property. If you choose to sell, you would then sell the property through, you have one hundred and eighty days to list a property, should we choose to sell, one hundred and eighty days from the judgment, uh, it has to be listed through a Realtor, the auction process is not, is no longer an option initially, uh, after the property is listed for one full year, if there are no sales, like you don't have any reasonable bids and no one to buy it, then you can then opt to do an auction. So tho- those things conflict with the ordinance related for procedure of a selling tax title property as it's currently written, so that's something that we're going to have to address, so that's, you know, one of the reasons why we're here, and as far as the timing. To Counselor Simonelli's question and concerns as far as taking property, is that public property is, what is the, the rules related to that? Uh, the legislature clearly outlines that you have two options, retain or sell, you, there's no additional home rule petition or other requirements specifically for tax title, I am not familiar with other pieces of, uh, city property, how that would be facilitated, I could look into it, but that's not really what we're discussing. So, we're here because, uh, we have a number of properties that are in land court. This was a little bit of a surprise to our tax title attorneys, because we've been working on these cases for some time, and the land court made a decision, and there was a delay for some reason, logistics, operational, and notification from the court to our, uh, tax title attorneys, Dan Brozio. So, we were informed late Thursday, uh, and I reached out to Counsel O'Malley, and I also included Counsel Condon on an email outlining, you know, what we need to do and the concerns, the reason why those two parties were included is because those parcels are in their ward specific, and I didn't want to violate any sort of meeting laws or communications to the whole entire council, so communicating through the president seemed most appropriate. So, in my email, I stated that we did, we were awarded judgments on these two properties, forty-two Crescent Ave and forty, forty-two Wentworth, uh, I outlined that, you know, we had, we, as in me, had previously notified the council presidents when these properties were going into land court, uh, the city council has, in, I think it's an ordinance or, an ordinance that if any, uh, legal action is going to be taken against any constituents, then the city council needs to be notified, uh, there have been notifications related to all of our land court, our intent to file land court, these properties were on one of those notifications, one was in March of twenty twenty-two, and the other one was in April twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four. So, notification was provided, and the reason why I say that is just to make sure that everyone is aware that it's not like we're doing this and not communicating. Very rarely does this actually happen where the land court, where we get to the point where the land court provides a judgment to the city where we have to make this decision, retain or sell. The tax title process is long, and it's long for a mul- multiple reasons, one because we're the government and we work very slow, and it goes through the courts, and they work very slow, but there's, there's reason behind that, we try to be diligent, right? The diligence is where the delays come in and, and the lag. In order to go into tax title, you have to be delinquent in your taxes for at least one year. You are, and I've spoken about this before, when we originally put people's names in the newspaper, and there was a bunch of questions, and a little bit of uproar, because we hadn't done it in quite some time, but in order to get your property into tax title, you have to be in default, you have not paid your real estate taxes, you would have received your four real estate tax bills, you would have received a demand bill, you would have received notification of intent to advertise, you would have received notification, well, you would have seen your name in the newspaper if anybody looked at it, the newspaper is published in The Advocate, these properties were in fact published, they were all communicated in the same way, that posting is posted at city hall and the library, it's also on the city website. From there, if you do not pay and you're still owe money, you, and the reason I'm going through this is just to make sure it's, everyone understands, like, the diligence in the process, it's not like we decided unilaterally to say, hey, we're going to take this property, and, you know, we didn't have any communication. So, we advertise, um, there's a period of time in which you can pay while that period is, you know, while you're advertised, if you don't pay, then what we do is we file a registered lien at the Registry of Deeds. If you pay, if you are logged into the Registry of Deeds, you can get notification on your, any changes to your deed. Most people don't do that, but that's just point of information and something that everyone should look into doing anyways. Uh, so you have a registered lien applied to your property, at that point, the collections are turned over to our tax title attorneys, Dan Brozio, uh, and they start what is the tax title collections process outside of this, outside of my office, per se. I don't have the list of all the requirements in which they are required to make, but the list is long, um, and it is all outlined in Mass General Law in land court. There are notifications that need to be mailed, there is, uh, validation that you have made numerous attempts to contact the people that you are aware as owner, there are requirements to reach out to next of kin or any possible relations in order to find and contact the people that do owe money. As a point of information, we have actually had, I have had a complaint that I dealt with the mayor, where we had, um, a constituent come in to complain that their son was contacted because the woman's mother was in tax title. She was not happy that her son was contacted because her mother was in tax title, and I said, I can understand your frustration, but this is why we do that, because now you are aware that your mother's in tax title, and you can take care of it. And the court and the legislature has made those things, you know, they've made those laws and rules so people are contacted, so it's not just like we send a letter once. So there's numerous contacts before you can even file a land court, I think it's at least one year that you have to be in tax title prior to filing a land court. In order to file a land court, you have to prove to the court that you have gone through all these processes, they will not accept your case if you do not prove that. I do not have the evidence here, but the evidence is in the fact that the land court took these cases in the first place, that we did do our due diligence. Once you're in land court, there are a whole number of other requirements as far as communicating with the people, the homeowners, doing additional due diligence and trying to contact anybody that could possibly know them, uh, sending notifications, uh, going to their house, trying to serve them, the court does not want to take people's properties. In the city, and I certainly do not want to take people's properties, the goal is to get people to pay. Majority of these, like I said, the majorities that go into land court do not end up with the city, because people, once they're in court, realize, you know, I can't ignore this bill anymore, because something's going to happen, and the land court makes it very clear that if you do not pay, you will eventually lose your property. Uh, so, all that process was followed, followed thoroughly, the land court finally made a judgment for us of all these two properties, um, and then that put us on the fourteen ti- day timeline. I'd like to give you a little bit of information or background on each individual property to inform your decision a little bit, but, um, before we get to that piece, retain or sell, like the council president said, retain, we have to come up with the money to actually pay the people whatever the equity they have, we do not have the funds to facilitate the purchase, the retention of either of these properties. The city is not all, is also not in the business of being landlords and property owners, so it is my suggestion that in these instances, that we, you know, you would choose or elect to sell, and that we would go through a process there, again, it's a little bit more about that, but as far as the background on the properties, uh, forty-two Crescent Ave, you know, one of the questions I did receive is, you know, what languages were these notifications communicated in, because there's a presumption, um, that based on the names that they are of, um, you know, it's a certain nationality, whether or not they can speak English or not, I do not know. I, I did not know firsthand, I, but I have been told, uh, that they can. So, the communications as currently required are only in English. The new law has, the communications that we had up until this point were only in English. The new law requires that during demands, we send out a notice in what is the state issued top seven languages, saying this is important notice, you have to have it interpreted, interpreted, uh, and I'm, I'm a little bit long-winded, but also with our real estate bill on the backer, as well as our real estate, personal property, uh, motor vehicle, and water, there is something on the back, and the top ten languages spoken in the city that states, this is important information that you should have interpreted. I just wanted to address that in case there were any questions. The people that own forty-two Crescent Ave are fluent in English, they were noncommunic- non-participants in this process, pretty much absent the whole entire time, until Thursday evening at five thirty P M., when they called our lawyers, our tax title attorneys, and said, oh, what can we do now, because they realized that they don't own their property anymore, we do. So conveniently, they're ready to make something happen. In addition to them being able to communicate and now being fully aware of the ramifications, uh, forty-two Crescent Ave is not their home, this is a rental property, they live on Highland Ave, in which they pay their taxes every quarter. So why they don't pay it on their rental property, I don't know, but they're very well aware that taxes are due, and they're paying on one property and not the other. I cannot speculate as to why that is, but I can tell you that they're paying over here, but not over here, that is a choice. So, that's forty-two Crescent Ave. Forty, forty-two Wentworth, um, you know, the, see, the process is all the same, uh, they have not paid their taxes since fiscal year two thousand seventeen, that's a problem. Uh, my understanding through, uh, tax attorneys is that this property is owned by the people that, uh, council president had indicated, it's actually two different families that own the property together, um, apparently there was some disagreements on paying the taxes, because one group was paying half, and the other group was not, and then the group that was paying said, well, we're not paying the taxes if you're not going to kick in your share, so they chose to stop paying, and now they owe us in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. But they have been communicated with, and they do speak in, can feel, easily comprehend the ramifications in which, you know, they're facing. So, communication isn't, has not been an issue, um, there haven't been any language barriers related to this, I just wanted to bring that up in case of work questions, um, because I know there is some, you know, we have a very diverse population, and communication can sometimes be difficult. Uh, so, that's a little background on the properties, the process, um, you know, with my suggestion to the council advising to sell, we have to make an election within fourteen days, we're here today to make this, you know, expeditiously. I made my point about retention, not having the funds to purchase either one of these, and we're really not in the business of owning properties, uh, these properties are occupied also, uh, forty, forty-two Wentworth by the owners, forty-two Crescent Ave by tenants, and we know that there's tenants there, because they called yesterday to ask, because they got a notification in the mail, and asking if it was real, and we said, you need to contact, uh, tax attorneys as well as your landlord, to make sure that they know that you're aware of what's going on. But, excuse me, I went back in junior high, my voice cracking. Yeah, so-
Well, and I, and I know that you all, you had also said that, you know, if we did vote to sell tonight, you would, you would recommend that we, we reach back out to them, give them a chance to redeem, uh, for, I think you said ninety days, uh, or something like that?
Uh, yep, that's exactly what I was going to say next. So, yes, I would suggest that we opt to sell, defer the listing for thirty days while our tax attorneys can continue to work with the parties that own the property, and if we can get them to pay, we can basically do a post-judgment, um, post-judgment, something to that effect. Oh, thank you, much appreciated, uh, what was the word specifically? Yeah, that in essence would effectuate a post-judgment redemption, that is the goal. The goal is to get the people to pay what they owe the city, because by them not paying, they're not paying anybody or paying for any of the services, and the goal is to get them to pay and keep their property, not sell it, it's a hassle, we don't want to do that. So, that is my suggestion, um, or the guidance that I can provide. Related to that, uh, in, you know, uh, related but somewhat separate, um, the ordinance as written in many ways is in violation with the updated law, so I would suggest that the council look to, uh, revisit that in ordinance ideally sooner than later, um, because the way the ordinance is written, to the council president's point, um, you know, we would have to get an appraisal and a recommendation from the planning board and the public property committee, that is not in violation, the applications for the purchase of tax title property for six hundred dollars, that is not, we're not allowed to do that anymore. You know, if we were to- You know, if we were to sell, you could require a vote. But as far as bullet point D under the procedure of selling tax title property, where it says the sales here under shall be publicly bid under the direction of the city solicitor, the properties cannot be publicly bid. They have to go through the listing process for at least one year and then they can be bid. So this ordinance needs to be rewritten a bit. And related to that, the council may want to take into consideration requesting that the mayor appoint a tax title custodian to facilitate these things. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77B, it states that the mayor of a city or the town board, if there is a selectman or the selectman of a town, can appoint a tax title custodian to facilitate all these things. I think that would be probably prudent and then you can work something in the ordinance to say the tax title custodian will work with these entities in advance and ideally make decisions on retain or sell at the time of filing and then updates. So I think I'm long-winded enough there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That, that's perfect. And, you know, we have councillor Condon. I'll go to you because you're a Ward 2 resident.
I had an opportunity to talk to Dan for about 15, 20 minutes today. And unfortunately, over the years, some treasurers were very lax on it. Other treasurers weren't. And usually come up with an agreement and the people ended up with their property back. But I remember coming before us several times. I was convinced of one thing. Dan gave them every opportunity to avoid this situation. And some people just don't get it. So that's why we're where we are. He made it clear to me, we don't want to get in the real estate business and I agree with him. So where we go from here, it's up to the people.
Thank you councillor Condon and councillor McDonald.
Thanks so much councillor president and thank you treasurer Grover for that really in-depth summary of the process. I do think it's actually really important for our constituents or anybody watching to hear the diligence that you and, and our attorneys have gone through. And I look forward to having more conversations about the potential ordinance changes. I do think, for example, that there's more that we could do to help make sure that at least those kinds of demand letters are translated in the right languages. We actually have a paper coming up about engaging with landlords overall, not property owners generally, but that might also help us identify common languages, you know, languages that folks really would best facilitate their participation if we could use that. But I, I really agree that it's, it's time to move forward. I support the sale and wanted to know what hap, so if we do actually sell this property, we settle up our own, you know, the tax bill, our attorney's costs, et cetera, what happens to the money?
So the money would go to the property, the previous property owners. I'll refer to them as the previous property owners because the city currently owns those properties. They are eligible for any excess equity above and beyond the fees and taxes and interest. So they have roughly a year and a half to claim those funds. We would put those funds in a separate account in our general ledger and I would put them in a separate bank account and wait for them to be claimed. In this instance, where we know who the people are, if they're not going to pay, then you can bet that they'll be standing at the door waiting for their check. And we would write that immediately as soon as the check cleared. If there were no known property owners, the, the funds would sit with the city, waiting for any property owner or heir that's eligible to make a claim. And if they did not make that claim, then it would go into unclaimed property and the city would retain those funds. But there is a specific process that's outlined in the updated law. We don't just get the money. We have to sit on it for quite some time. And the reason why, you know, the genesis of law was to prevent the theft of home equity. And the only way that the city would end up with that is if no one was, no, no known owner, no known heir came forward in the appropriate timeframe.
Understood, thank you. That's very helpful. I agree with you that the odds of nobody coming forward to say, yes, I would like $300,000, please, since you took my property, is low. So I appreciate that. And just a, a thing to consider when we do go through this tax title legislation, I just even wonder if it would be useful to somehow indicate that if we ended up, we did end up with unclaimed funds, I would love to see that go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I feel like that's the right use of that kind of money. I realize that's an extremely unlikely situation to begin with, but nonetheless, just wanted to state that on the record. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor McDonald. Councillor Winslow.
Yeah, so Dan, so we make the decision to sell, but we're still custodians of the property until the sale is closed then, right? So, so that's this tax title custodian, do we, are we entitled to, to deduct the cost of the tax title custodian during the time between we own the property and the time we sell it?
That we would not.
What?
That we would not be able to do. A tax title custodian would be someone that presumably is appointed, you know, would be appointed by the mayor, presumably someone that works for the city. You would not be able to deduct any cost related. Any cost that they incurred in facilitating would be recouped. If there was any payment to the tax title custodian for services, that would not, that is not recoupable.
So like.
Because, so I'm sorry, but the tax title custodian you would appoint presumably for three years or however long their tenure is, to facilitate these things on an ongoing basis, because you have tax processes constantly. You don't always have a property in hand, but you wouldn't want to revisit this exercise every time that you come into, you know, the situation. You would want to have someone appointed that acts as a tax title custodian all the time.
So, I mean, if we have, we, we decide to sell, like in terms of cost to keep a building heated, to keep the yard up, that, those are things we can't deduct against the sale ultimately? Is that, I mean, we can only deduct, we can only take the taxes and then the former owner gets.
We can apply any expenses related to maintaining the property. Keeping the heat on is not the function of the landlord. That is a function of whoever the residents are. You know, if there was no one living there, then yes, we would want to maintain the heat. But if we list this property for sale, I would venture a guess that it would be sold and we would have an offer. If we listed it on Thursday, we would have an offer signed on Tuesday, just like every other property in the city. You know, one is a two-family. It's appraised through the assessors at 695, call it 700,000. We could sell that property tomorrow for more money than that. 42 Crescent Ave is a single family. It's assessed at over $900,000. That would sell immediately. So as far as like the long-term maintenance or heating it or anything to that effect, you know, that I think is less of an issue.
Yeah, because these are probably, so there just may be some, some situation where the taxes could potentially exceed the value of the property, then we would have to wait a year and then get what we could kind of.
So that's not going to happen in this case. When people don't pay their taxes, they go into tax title relatively quickly. Generally, it's not much of a lag. Where you're taxed on, you know, what's our current tax rate, 1210%? So it would take you a lot of years to have your taxes, your outstanding taxes exceed your property value. If anybody gets to that point, then I guess I'm not doing my job very well. But so 4042 Wentworth, they owe, you know, in excess of $100,000. Their property is still worth $700,000. There's more than enough equity for us to recoup. But the goal is to not allow any properties to go that long where they owe such an amount of money that it's less likely that we would collect. You know, the goal is for people to pay. My job is to get people to pay in a timely manner because my job is to collect the money so we can use it to facilitate the operations of the city. That's really all we're trying to do here is get people to pay as soon as possible, not anything else. All right, bye.
Thank you councillor Winslow. And actually, that's a great point, that the sooner we do this, the more money they get. The, the longer we don't do tax title, the less money they're going to get, which, you know, is not fair to them and it's administrative burden for the city. I do want to explain that the reason why this is before us tonight, because I was being asked, prior to this happening, I was being asked to make a decision, are we going to retain these properties or sell them, as the council president? And I had just kind of put my shoes in, if I wasn't the council president and I found out the council president sold property without time in the city council, I'd be pissed. And so I thought it was the right thing to do, to come here and make a decision as the entire body. You know, we as a city council own all public property. It's our decision to sell public property. I have never taken a vote to sell public property. I think the last time the city did was when we sold City Hall as part of the redevelopment in 2015, but that was before my tenure and since then we have not, at least not that I can recall. So I appreciate the work of the, of the city treasurer. Thank you for that. The other little wrinkle that we have is we don't know what vote total, total we need because we haven't really done this in a long time. So we're going to assume we need a super majority of eight votes, but we might need less. We're not quite sure. We're aiming for eight. Because this got on the, the agenda, not within the open meeting law allotted time, you know, it is an emergency that is allowed by law to amend it, but for, for good, for, you know, transparency's sake, because we are talking about selling people's properties, I would like us to ratify the vote that we take tonight next week. So basically, we're taking the vote tonight to sell. We will just have on the agenda next week, a vote to ratify. I think it's just, if someone says, hey, that, how did you do this without us knowing? We don't have to do it. I mean, but I think it would be helpful from a transparency's perspective. I see a, a light from councillor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question about that and I'm fine with that because you definitely want to give everybody as much information as possible. It sounds like we have, if there was a vote that needs to be taken and the deadline is tomorrow, so if we're taking the vote tonight and if we're ratifying the vote, do you understand like if, if our deadline is tomorrow, then the vote's tonight?
Yeah, no, the vote is happening tonight. The formal action is taking tonight. The ratification is more for the open meeting law. Because like if you violate the open meeting law, usually what you just need to do is have another meeting where you disclose what you did.
Okay.
At the meeting where you didn't, you know what I mean? And so it's, it's not a for this thing, it's for an open meeting law thing of the public should know that we did this and we ratified it last, we took the vote last week, we're ratifying the decision we made during the meeting that didn't have 48 hours' notice. I'm just trying to like dot my i's, cross my t's. It's not often that we sell people's houses. With that, are there any motions? Which I guess, I guess that the motion would be to opt to sell the properties related to litigation number 24TL000383, which was paper 25525, 42 Crescent Ave, parcel identification number 072824410. Is there a motion? And we have councillor McDonald.
Just a, a quick point. Can we include that that is in the manner described by the treasurer, which included this 30-day period for, you know, negotiating with the property, with the property owners?
Yeah, so you're going to vote, to be clear, you're voting to sell.
Yes.
To authorize me to inform and move forward with that with the caveat that we will do a 30-day stay from listing the property in order to try to get these people to pay up.
Resolve the case, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
All right, so whose motion is that? Okay, councillor Semenelli's motion, seconded by councillor McDonald, to opt to sell 42 Crescent Ave pursuant to a 30-day hold. With that, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote will, will opt to sell this property and no vote will not.
Councillor Condon.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Seeca.
Yes.
Councillor Semenelli.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councill, council president O'Malley.
Yes. That vote was two for nine to zero. It gets us to the super majority that we, we don't know if we need, but I think we're, we're good there. The next one would be two, a paper 25625, related to 40 to 42 Wentworth Street, parcel ID 029145418, related to Land Court case 22TL000343. Is there, on councillor Condon's motion?
I mean.
What would you take the motion, is that?
Yeah, we can take them, we'll take the motion up and then I'll, and I'll go grab them. So on councillor Condon's motion to sell this property, subject to the 30-day waiting period described, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Taylor. I'll be right back. Just a, so councillor Condon made a motion to opt to sell 40 to 42 Wentworth Street and that was seconded by councillor Taylor. And the clerk, a yes vote on this, will vote to sell and no vote will not. Clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Condon.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Seeca.
Yes.
Councillor Semenelli.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor president O'Malley.
So that, that has also passed nine to zero unanimously. Thank you, city treasurer Grover. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very few new things happen in a city council-like term, so this is an unusual one. Thank you all for, for taking the time to ask really good questions and make sure that we're doing the right thing. The next thing is communications.
Paper 250-25, communication from planning board regarding city council paper 171-25, MBTA communities zoning overlays ordinance amendments.
Councillor Winslow for the paper.
Motion to accept the report from the planning board and.
On councillor Winslow's motion to accept the communication, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Semenelli. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report is received. Councillor Winslow.
Yeah, so we had a, the planning board and Rules and Ordinance Committee had a joint meetings last week to talk about various papers, including this paper. This paper relates to some technical zoning amendments to the MBTA Communities Act ordinance we passed back in December 2023. As you know, one of the things in passing that ordinance, the ordinance then had to be approved by the executive office of housing and livable communities. You know, we, the city staff was communicating with that office as we were doing it, so we thought we were pretty much there. But ultimately, they had a couple extra conditions that they wanted us to, that, that are requiring us to amend the ordinance to conform with their approval of that. So they conditionally approved our ordinance, you know, subject to a couple of changes. Those changes, we had one, created one zoning district that had a cap and they did not want us to have that cap. So what that is basically doing, we're going to relieve that cap and then we've removed some, some other land to make up for that loss. So it's basically just making a technical amendment to, to, you know, adjust that. So and the, you know, we had, in the mayor's communications, there was pretty, you know, all the technical details about why that was being done and what that is. So we have city planner Michelle Romero, if anybody has any questions. But, you know, my, my recommendation would be to, to follow the planning board's recommendation to adopt these ordinance changes as recommended and drafted, so, yeah.
Thank you for that. And I'm going to, our, our clerk is going to read the paper, which I always forget to have done.
Okay.
Paper 171-25. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that Title 12 of the Code of the City of Malden, MCC, is hereby amended to eliminate the development cap in the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay Subdistrict, MCMOD-MD1, and eliminate the effective date of final approval by the state of our district compliance application, per the determination issued by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Thank you. And before we go on, I just wanna thank Ms. Morgan Hunt for all your great work. You've been helping us the last couple of weeks. And, you know, I just wanna really acknowledge that you've been doing a great job, and it's been great serving up here with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
So with that, any questions? Any questions? Councilor Linehan?
My only question is, I just wanna clarify, we are gonna be out of conditional compliance once we do this, and then we'll be all set with MBTA communities? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean... So, yeah, if we pass this ordinance, then we will be in full compliance, and we will be out of conditional approval. We will be in final approval, so, yeah.
Okay, great.
Councilor Condon?
Yes. I'd like to... Steve, can you give me an example of how much they've loosened up on the parking, parking restrictions? Say they go from a two to a three, and they got five bedrooms. What's the required parking?
I mean, this doesn't... These ordinances that we're passing have nothing to do... These amendments have nothing to do with parking. It just really, you know, it's changing some over... You know, there was an overlay district related to Overlook Ridge, and that had a cap. So we're having to relieve that cap, and we're having to change... So I don't know if City Planner Romero could explain a little bit more, but this is just a very technical thing in terms of... And there was, when we passed it, we set a date for effectiveness, and the office said we should have just passed it clear. So it just, these amendments will make the ordinance effective, you know, upon ordainment, not upon their approval. And then it will also just make a slight change in the planning map to be consistent and reduce, relieve this cap. So I don't know if our planner would like to kinda explain that. But there's no relation to parking in this, what's being talked about, so, yeah.
I just hate being told by the MBTA people that this is what we have to do. I think we're gonna end up very densely populated. And we're gonna loosen things up. And people are gonna take any kind of advantage they can. And we're gonna end up like a summel. And I'm not looking forward to that.
Thank you, Councilor Condon. I do wanna, you know, with that, I was having a sidebar with Councilor Linehan. I just wanna thank Councilor Winslow for your efforts this year. There have been a lot of complicated things that you've had to shuffle and shepherd through ordinance, hard, things that are hard to remember, even for people who care about this stuff. And we appreciate you staying on top of it. Are there any motions for this, or any more questions? Councilor McDonald?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the... Or rather, confirm that the Planning Board's recommendation... No, you know what? This is for the next... It's the next Planning Board recommendation, not this one, I'm sorry. I'm happy to make the motion.
Second.
Cool. I'm assuming the motion is to... What is the motion?
The motion is to, you know, adopt the paper as proposed. Yeah, I mean, there's no... And adopt the Planning Board's recommendation to approve.
I would make a motion to ordain the paper and include the recommended amendments from the Planning Board.
We have to enroll first.
Yeah. We have to enroll the paper, sorry, yeah.
Sorry.
Enroll the paper.
Enroll the paper and include the Planning Board's recommendations.
Understood. As... Do we have to amend it first?
Just to be clarified, there were no Planning Board amendments.
No amendments, okay.
So just enroll the paper.
It was just the date. But that, that's...
Well, that is true. There is a little bit of...
Maybe the City Planner, would you like... Can you tell us what our motion should be?
Sorry.
Thank you. So you... The planning, one recommendation that the Planning Board made was to... I'm sorry, let me get the right one.
Is the question just whether the description of the date constitutes an amendment to the paper?
Yeah, yeah. So the recommendation is approval of the proposed amendments as submitted, and then to use the date of ordainment for the new map revision date. It was just proposed as a revised-to-be-determined date. So you do need to put something in that TBD. And the recommendation of the board is that it be the date they're ordained.
Okay, so is there a motion to amend the paper reflective of the recommendation from the Planning Board? To amend the date so that it would be effective, the date of the ordainment?
So, I mean, it looks like the date of the ordainment would tend to be June 3, 2025. So that would be, I guess it would be, that would be the date we would recommend now, so, I guess we could, you know...
Yeah, I mean...
So, yeah, 'cause we were enrolling tonight, so we enroll, you know, the proposed amendments, and then use what they... And amend the zoning overlay districts to a revised date of June 3, 2025.
This is actually a really important point, because if we enroll tonight, we need six votes. If we want to suspend the rules, we would need eight votes. And if we wanted to ordain all in the same night, we would be nine votes, I believe.
So, yeah.
Maybe. It's a little confusing, because it's like one of these, like, lower threshold votes. I think it just makes sense to do it the normal way, so we don't have to worry about that. So June 3?
June, yeah, that would... June 3 would be the day we'd be ordaining it.
Can, just in case that doesn't happen on June 3, can the amendment be to reflect, such that this date shall reflect the date of ordainment?
Yeah, that, I mean, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, so what?
Tend to be June 3?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the motion is to enroll the paper?
No, to amend. We'd amend the paper.
No, no, it's enroll the paper, because the paper has the amendments. So the Planning Board did not...
See, I'm of the belief of this, too. I think that we can enroll as, per the recommendation, but I have been pressured, and I think it's clear, so that we don't have to dispute this, just to amend it and then enroll.
Then I make a motion to amend the paper to clarify, as recommended by the Planning Board, that the ordinance will be effective the date it is ordained.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Winslow. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilor Condon opposed. That is, that passed eight to one. Am I counting right? No, not 10 to one. Not, not, nine to one, nine to one.
Nine to one, now?
Yeah, now we enroll. Enroll as amended.
So moved.
Councilor McDonald's motion to enroll as amended, seconded by Councilor Winslow. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilor Condon's opposed. Nine to one. That is enrolled. I don't think we should suspend the rules. Next order of business.
Paper 1... Excuse me. Paper 251-25, Communication from Planning Board Regarding City Council Paper 172-25, Flood Plains District's Zoning Ordinance Amendments.
So I just make a motion to accept the communication from the Planning Board?
Seconded by Council... So on Councilor Winslow's motion to accept the communications, seconded by Councilor Semenelli. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The communication is received.
Paper 172-25. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, MCC 12.08.0440, Flood Plains, 12.12.110, Flood Plains Districts, 12.32.60, Definitions Zoning, are hereby amended to include new regulations as required by FEMA, so that referenced areas will remain eligible for FEMA-sponsored flood insurance programs.
Councilor Winslow?
Okay, so the Department of Conservation and Recreation, who works with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to help establish floodplain districts, recommended that we update our floodplain maps and our zoning, so they'll be, take effect... Our new FEMA maps going into effect July 8. So they're recommending that we do that, because if we don't, residents and property owners would not be eligible for FEMA flood insurance. So it's important that we do this by that timeframe. They had some recommended format for updating our ordinance, so I prepared that, and then had the Department of Conservation, Recreation review that. And so they said that, you know, the amendments looked good. Then we had, last week, we had the Planning Boards and Rules and Ordinants met to have a hearing and review. The Planning Board staff had several suggestions that the Planning Board did vote to recommend. One of the things they would like us to do is send the amendments to the city solicitor and to the building commissioner. And there was also, one of the things that needed to be clarified in the ordinance, and we should probably vote to make this amendment tonight, and then send it, the amended paper to the Planning, to the city solicitor and building commissioner, was that we're adding some definitions. And if you're familiar with the zoning law, you know, our Chapter 12 of our ordinances, there's a standard set of definitions in there. And, you know, we're adding definitions that really relate to the floodplain section of the ordinances in there. And, you know, Planner Romero really pointed out that we should, when we have those definitions, we should really have a sentence at the end of those special definitions to say they're really only intended to apply to the floodplain district, because that can cause confusion, because there might be some reference in some other part of the ordinances. And we just wanna be clear that that definition is limited and should be used extensively. So that was a good recommendation. So we should probably, you know, I would make a recommendation that we vote to amend the paper per the, and add that, the language about this definition is only applicable to the property in the floodplain district at every definition that was added. And then have the paper reviewed by the legal office and the building inspector, and come back in a couple of weeks after, you know, tabling it to get their comments, and then we would, we would look at enrolling in a couple of weeks, so...
Perfect. So Councilor Winslow's motion, and I will, I will go to people, but Councilor Winslow's motion is to accept the Planning Board's recommendation to amend the paper by adding this definition, this definition is only applicable to property in a floodplain district, in the floodplain district, and, as he stated, to get review and approval of the amendments to the city solicitor and the building commissioner.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Crowe. Any questions on the motion? With that, the clerk will call the roll on the amendment. Sorry, my apologies. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is amended.
Okay, and so then I recommend that we table the paper so that we can have legal and building inspector, building commissioner review to, before we vote to enroll it, so, yeah.
Sounds like a plan. On Councilor Winslow's motion to table, it takes precedence, seconded by Councilor Cologne-Hayes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The paper is tabled. Next order of business.
Paper 252-25, Communication from Planning Board Regarding City Council Paper 185-25, Site Plan Review for Educational, Religious, and Child Care Facilities Zoning Ordinance Amendments.
Councilor Winslow for the paper.
So I just make a motion that we accept the communication from the Planning Board?
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Semenelli. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report is received.
185-25. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, MCC 12.12.30, Use Regulations, is hereby amended as follows, to update existing table of use regulations to correspond with recent site plan review regulations for daycare centers, nonprofit educational facilities, and religious facilities, as ordained in Paper 356, Series of 2024.
Councilor Winslow?
So, as you recall, earlier this year, we did pass an ordinance change to our zoning to require site plan review for daycare centers, nonprofit educational facilities, and religious facilities. So we passed that paper. But in doing that, I mean, as you know, in the zoning, we have standards that might apply to a use, but then we also have what's called the Table of Uses. We did not make sure that the Table of Uses indicated that those uses now need site plan review, so it's an oversight that Planner Romero pointed out, and she proposed this technical amendment, so that we have, right now, there's, some of these now seem to be allowed by right, some of them by special permit. This just makes it consistent for these uses now, they all have to go through special site plan review, and so the Table of Uses is just gonna reflect that. And that's, it's a technical change to conform really with the intent of that ordinance, so it just makes sure that we, the Table of Uses conforms to what we passed recently, so...
Thank you, Councilor Winslow. Any discussion on this motion? On Councilor Winslow's motion to enroll?
So, yeah, my motion would be enroll per the...
There's no, there's no recommendation, it's just to...
Yeah, yeah. Just to enroll, yeah, yeah. Just to enroll the paper as written.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Semenelli. With that, the clerk, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The paper is enrolled. Next order of business.
Paper 253-25... I'm sorry, committee reports. Paper 253-25, Committee Report, The Standing Committees on Finance and Rules and Ordinance, to whom is referred Papers 216 and 217, Series of 2025, Having Considered the Same, Make the Following Report. Committees recommend these papers out favorably to the full council.
Councilor Winslow?
Yeah, so just a motion to accept the committee report?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report is received.
Paper 216-25. Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, MCC 2.24.50, Police Superior Officer's Salary Schedule is hereby amended by adding the updated salary schedule chart effective July 1, 2023.
Councilor Winslow?
So this is the standard rules and ordinance changes to reflect the negotiated salary schedule. So this is just updating the current superior officer's salary schedule for the police department to reflect the one that has been negotiated to, in the latest contract. So that's what it is doing, so, very standard. So I would make a motion to enroll this ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Semenelli. Just for the edification of the council and the public, when it comes to, you know, collective bargaining agreements, and this is something that we're gonna need to, like, you know, be aware of, particularly when we get into tough, you know, financial straits. You know, non-financial terms of a collective bargaining agreement can be agreed upon, you know, without city council approval. It's any of the financial components of a collective bargaining agreement that do not become effective unless approved by the city council. So that's just something to be aware of. And I'm not... Um, and I'm not saying that that's what we would do here, uh, but that's the reason why, you know, we have to vote on this, both as the financial transfer, as well as changing the ordinance to reflect that. So with that, um, I believe the clerk will call the roll on this one.
So, and a motion to enroll?
So, yeah, so, so right now, it's just the, or, in ordinance, so with that, the clerk, I mean, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, that has passed unanimously.
Then I would make a motion to suspend the rule, so we can, uh, ordain tonight as well.
On Councilor Winslow's motion to suspend, council rules for the purposes of ordaining this paper, uh, seconded by Councilor Cologne Hayes. With that, the clerk will call the roll.
Uh, Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon? Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor Linehan?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselors, uh, Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
Yes. That pa, the rules have been suspended.
So I make a motion to ordain the ordinance, then, thank you.
On Councilor Winslow's motion to ordain, seconded by Councilor Crowe. With that, all those in favor, oh.
To ordain.
All those in favor, please.
Oh, we got it.
Oh.
'Cause it takes nine.
Oh, okay. So you will call the roll. Okay, cool, good on you. I was right. First time.
Councilor Cologne Hayes? Councilor Condon? Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor Linehan?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli? Councilor Taylor? Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
That is ordained. Uh, now there's the financial paper.
Paper 217-25, Order, That the Sum of $200,000 Be and the Same Is Hereby Transferred From Salary Reserve, Zero, Account 00109965110, To Police Salaries, Account Number 00102105120.
Councilor McDonald for the paper, hold on.
Thank you, Council President. So, yes, this is the appropriation that goes along with the changes to the police superior salary schedule that we just approved. Um, and to, to members of the public who are following along, it is pretty normal for us to suspend the rules to go ahead and approve, um, changes to salaries that come through a collective bargaining agreement, so that that can go ahead and get processed. Um, folks may or may not remember that we had actually done an update to the police superior salary schedule, um, within the last year or so, and that had to do with maintaining the ratio between the police superior sec, salary schedules, um, and making sure those ratios between the levels are correct with the patrol, uh, police salary schedule, which is a separate bargaining unit. Um, and the police, just the police superior salary schedules include sergeants, lieutenants, captains, and senior captains. Um, and so there, we discussed that there's a little bit of a, of, uh, the, each year of this three-year contract, um, which begins effective, um, July 1, 2023, so this, this catches us up in the back pay, um, is in fact a, a 3% standard increase, but, but those steps are, um, start at a higher level, because we went back and kept the ratio between the sergeant, uh, pay and the top patrol pay, which has the effect of then raising the entire, um, senior salary schedule. Um, so that is, that is what, uh, was approved through the collective bargaining and sent to us for our review, and that's what the appropriation will cover, that, um, catching us up through this fiscal year on the new salary schedule.
Any questions? Any motions?
Uh, so moved to adopt the order.
Seconded by Councilor Condon. With that, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor Linehan?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
That paper has been adopted unanimously.
Paper 254-25, Committee Report, The Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments to Whom Is Referred Papers 226 and 227, Series of 2025, Having Considered This, Having Considered the Same, Make the Following Report. Committee recommends these appointments out favorably to the full council.
Councilor Linehan for the committee.
Uh, motion to receive the committee report.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Sika. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report's received. Council, uh, you have to read. Yeah, why don't we read, we'll read both papers.
Paper 226-25, Mayoral Appointment, Michelle Ferguson, 43 Boston Street, Malden, as an associate member of the planning board, said term to expire March 1st, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. In Paper 227-25, Mayoral Appointment, Maria Schroeder, 113 Savin Street, Malden, as an associate member of the planning board, said term to expire March 1st, 2030, and to commence upon the confirmation by the city council.
Councilor Linehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so we met with Michelle and Maria, um, who are both taking the place of associate members that are moving up to full, um, member status, which is great. We have associates that are taking on, um, you know, they're retaining their roles on the board. They've learned and are moving into full status, which it's great that we're keeping folks on the planning board. Um, so when we met with Michelle, she told us a little bit about herself. She works in financial services, um, has also served with the Malden Public Schools in various roles. Actually, just got to know her a little bit when we did, um, Walk and Bike to School Day last week, which was pretty cool. Um, Maria, on the other hand, is an architect. She has a lot of experience working in urban design, um, has worked in cities like Malden, and just has pretty amazing professional expertise. Um, we really liked talking to both of them, and felt like we were very lucky to get folks with this kind of experience and enthusiasm for giving back to the city. Um, we felt that we unanimously wanted to approve both of them to the planning board. So I would make a motion, I guess we have two different papers, so I'll make a motion that we, um, confirm Michelle Ferguson first, since we have that paper first.
Seconded by Councilor, uh, Simonelli. Uh, with the clerk will call the roll.
It was Councilor Crowe, it's her constituent.
Oh, oh, sorry, oh, sorry, Council, Councilor Crowe. Oh, sorry. Councilor Crowe.
Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor Linehan?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli? Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
Yes. That appointment is confirmed.
And I make a motion that we approve Maria Schroeder.
And that can be Councilor Simonelli. Uh, Savin Street's Ward 3, right?
Yeah.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Condon?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor Linehan?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Sika?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor? Councilor Winslow?
Yes.
Council President O'Malley?
Yes. The docket is clear, any personal privilege. Off to the races. We got Councilor Crowe coming in first.
Ooh, I won. Thank, just kidding. Um, I just wanted to invite everybody, as we know, this is Memorial Day weekend, and we're changing it up a little bit. And, um, so on Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day, we'll be hosting it at Bell Rock Memorial Park, um, on Main Street. At 10:00 AM, we'll be unveiling a bronze statue at the World War II Memorial, so I hope everyone gets a chance to come on over and, um, support our veterans and, um, Memorial Day.
Thank you. Councilor Simonelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate everybody in, uh, in the city for all the hard work that's been done for the opening of, uh, Carested Park, and for everybody that has come down this past week, uh, to both Carested Pa, Park and the Ball Field. And, uh, I just want to let all my colleagues know that I have a party this week, uh, Wednesday, uh, Thursday, 6 to 8, Sung Klang Restaurant in the neighborhood. You're all invited. Come on over, rub some elbows, say hello. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Simonelli. Councilor McDonald?
I wanted to remind folks that Malden's favorite community, uh, All Community Arts Festival is coming up with Malden Porch Fest on Saturday, May 31st. It is, uh, 12 to 6 PM. And we've got bands and hosts all over the city, some of, not just, um, people's houses or their porches or lawns, but also, um, local businesses and organizations are hosting stages. So it's free, open to everyone. Come check it out. Go to maldenporchfest.org to, uh, see the map of performers and venues. And it is not too late to sign up. You can still sign up to be a host or be a performer. Uh, so just wanted to, uh, thank everyone who has, uh, been a part of volunteering or sharing their music or their space, and, um, hope the rain holds off this year. And I think it'll be a great, I think it'll be a great event. We'll see you out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Winslow?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who came out to Maplewood Fest on Saturday, and all the volunteers and, uh, businesses that participated. Our fourth annual happened, and we're looking forward to the fifth. It was just a fun time and a great way to celebrate Maplewood Square and really promote that. Um, and I really thank all the volunteers from the Maplewood Association, as well as the, the Malden Cultural Council who provided the funding, so thank you very much. And then, just a few things, um, on Wednesday, May 28th, um, at Malden Public Library, there's a Haitian cultural celebration going on, so, um, that's from 6 to 8 PM, so encourage people to come up for that. Um, sounds very interesting. And then on Sunday, um, June 1st, um, Bike to the Sea is having its 33rd Annual Bike to the Sea Day, starting at the Bike Kitchen, so that's, uh, you know, get there, um, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock. Uh, it's actually free this year, um, and then, um, a ride to the, uh, beach and back, and then they'll be celebrating down at, uh, Night Shift Brewing at the end. So, um, should be fun, as always, so please come on out and, uh, go, go by the Bike Kitchen if your bike needs a tune-up. Thank you, great.
Councilor Sika?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is the prom. Malden High's prom is tomorrow night. I think it's like my fourth or fifth year driving kids to the red carpet. It is one of my favorite things to do all year. This year, I have the pleasure of drive, driving Kevin and Kimberly to the prom. We're wearing red, so I'm so excited, if anybody's around. I think it starts at 4? 4, right? I'm picking up early, but, so I wasn't sure of the exact time, so. Hopefully, it'll be a beautiful day for pictures in the, um, at Malden High, so I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. And from the chair, um, you know, I just want to thank everyone that has been coming out to the Spout Palm Brook Greenway meetings. Uh, we had one last Thursday, May 15th. Uh, we had one with the Traffic Commission today, May 20th. And Councilor Crowe and Councilor Spetafor will be sponsoring a, um, another meeting for, for the businesses in the area on Canal Street on May 28th at 10:00 AM at Charles and Canal. So I appreciate that. Uh, from a, from another side of my interests, um, it's now time to prune your lilacs. So as soon as your lilac buds die, uh, you should be planting your lilacs. It's not many plants that you prune in the spring, uh, but if you don't prune your lilacs now, it will put out new buds and suck up energy that could be used at, at, uh, actually making the plant stronger. So prune your lilacs. Thank you. We, is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.